To start with, you know, we're less than 24 hours away from the beginning of voting. I am certain that you're tired of, at least you're maybe starting to get tired of all the texts and emails and phone calls. I'll apologize for my part. We just don't know how else to reach people, given this current, the current reality of our social distancing. And so, you know, bear with us. We think that this message is quite important. And so we are doing our best to try to get that message out, but to try to do it in a way that's not, not annoying, and certainly not offensive. But if not offensive, we hope it's not too annoying. My name is David Levitt, and my desire is to try and get a message out to as many state delegates as I can about why I'm running, what the important things in this race are, and quite frankly, try to raise awareness as to why the Attorney General's race is such an important race. Many people view the election for any prosecutor, whether it's a county attorney or an attorney general, as kind of a down-ticket race. But when they truly understand the role that prosecutors play in everyday life in America today, people have, people have a different viewpoint. Last night, we had a wonderful event. We had Bernie Kerik, who's the former New York Police Commissioner, who spent 30 years in the New York City Police Force and led New York City, which is the nation's largest police force. He was then targeted for tax fraud and spent three years and 11 days in federal prison. And he's the author of a book, From Jailer to Jailed. And we had him and another man named Pat Nolan, who had a similar experience. Those two are very outspoken criminal reform advocates. And they, our discussion last night was moderated by Brett Tolman, and it, who is a former US Attorney. It's on YouTube. You can go to davidlevitt.com and see it, or you can go to our YouTube channel at David Levitt for Attorney General. Sherry's going to send you a link here. If you can look at it, I think it will be most enlightening, because it encapsulates in a discussion from people who really know, who have experienced both sides of the law, why it's so, some of the reasons why it's so important to reform our criminal justice system. You know, I'm the Utah County Attorney, the elected prosecutor in Utah County. And so, I know, and when I say that, because I want you to understand that I know what I'm talking about when I say that our criminal justice system is in real peril. Quite frankly, it's mired in the mud and the muck of bureaucracy, of complacency, of revolving doors. And we have a system that should be helping protect society. And while it does put a lot of people in jail, it really doesn't protect society as it needs to. And I'm running for office for Attorney General, because we must really reform our criminal justice system. If we don't, our liberties are in peril. And if it weren't so, if it weren't such a critical need to reform our criminal justice system, quite frankly, I wouldn't be running for this office. We all know that our founders gave us a constitution, a legislative branch to make laws, an executive branch to enforce them, a judicial branch to referee the other two. But the most significant power, they never gave government. The founders never gave government the power to decide guilt or innocence of a fellow citizen. They never gave government the power to take away a fellow citizen's liberty. They kept that power to themselves, the people, in the form of a jury trial. John Adams, one of the founders and the second President of the United States, said, quote, "Representative government," which we're in, which we're obviously participating in here through this convention process, "representative government and trial by jury are the heart and lungs of liberty. Without them, they have no other fortification. We have no other fortification against being ridden like horses, worked like cattle, and fed and clothed like swine and hounds." He realized that if the government that has the power to accuse also is the same entity that has the power to convict and take away liberty, then you have both the accusation power and the conviction power in the same hands. And that goes away completely from the checks and balances that our founders envisioned. That's why they, that's why they kept that power to themselves in the form of the jury trial. Founder John Dickinson implored us. He said, "It is the duty of every man and woman to maintain," it's the duty of every man and woman to maintain, I don't know where that ring's coming from, but let me see if I can figure that out. Kind of a weird sound, I apologize. But Founder John Dickinson said this, "It's the duty of every man and woman to maintain to the utmost the jury trial, to restore it to its ancient dignity if it's impaired, and above all, to guard it with the most jealous circumspection." Well, I'm here to tell you that the jury trial is indeed impaired, if not nearly dead. While it's written into our constitution, it's on the verge of extinction, as we have relegated the jury trial to the dusty shelves of history. Today, 99% of every criminal case receives no jury trial. Instead, prosecutors give plea bargains in exchange for guilty pleas. And what that really means is that 99 times out of 100, the government never has to prove the allegations that it makes. And we have to ask ourselves, when the government doesn't have to prove that, what will stop the government from doing that to you, or to me, or to anybody in which it feels is a threat? And I'm here to say that with John Adams, I will say, there's nothing that stands between us and the government when that happens. We must not trade our liberty for efficiency. To do so is to barter our birthright for a hollow promise of order. It was Thomas Jefferson who said, it's not Thomas Jefferson, excuse me, it was Benjamin Franklin who said, "That the person who will sacrifice his liberty in exchange for security or order will soon find that he or she has neither." Now, we're implementing the changes that I'm talking about in Utah County. And we're seeing much success. You know, the plea bargain crept into our system, beginning in the Civil War. And it kind of took over, it grew like a pernicious weed until 1970. And from 1970 to today, it has almost taken over the entire garden spot of the United States, if I can put it that way. Because today, with 99% plea bargains, you know, it is the cornerstone of our criminal justice system, not the jury trial. And so, while it took us 100 and some odd years to get to this point, it's going to take us some time to turn that back. And so, I'm not suggesting that we're ever going to, that in our lifetime, we will eliminate plea bargains. But I am suggesting that we have to reduce them. And I am suggesting that we have to have more trials. And that's what the Attorney General should be doing. Instead, Sean Reyes fixates on raising money to augment his lifestyle in issues that make him look good, rather than focusing on Utah's problems. In the last three years, Sean used the power of his office to raise $1.2 million in campaign funds. And during that same time, he spent nearly all those funds, and none of it was on an election, because there wasn't one. Instead, he spends the money on, he spends the money on raising money. Because you have to spend money to make money, right? And so he holds swanky parties, he hires high-priced consultants, and they go out, and they gain, they trade the Office of Attorney General for access, which is why you can raise so much money when you're in a position like that, because people want access to power. And I will tell you that that is absolutely not the role of the Attorney General. The Office of the Attorney General should never be for sale. It's not a private money trough, it's a public trust. Well, Sean Reyes also uses fluffy endorsements to persuade you to give him a third term in office, all the while ignoring Utah's critical issues. And I view this process and the convention process as a solemn and a somber process. It's the process through which we show gratitude for our liberties by carefully vetting and weighing candidates and issues. This is not a high school popularity contest. And I got to say that the only endorsements that I seek are yours, the endorsements of the delegates, you, the people who are protecting our liberties. Now, there are other issues besides criminal justice that are critical to Utah, public lands. As a rural elected county attorney, I fought the federal government for eight years over access to our public lands. That's a fight that I'll lead as Attorney General. Because Utah's in Utah, should truly have more to say about what goes on in Utah than a bureaucrat in Washington does. The Attorney General is also the legal advisor to every state agency. And as the legal advisor to every state agency, I will ensure that chief among the advice that my office gives is that government exists to serve its citizens, not to build a bigger governmental empire. You know, I know firsthand that we'll never prosecute nor incarcerate our way out of our drug problem. I'm working in Utah County, and as Attorney General, if given the opportunity to be Attorney General, I'll work to find different solutions to the wash, rinse, and repeat cycle of jailing nonviolent offenders. We truly do need to understand that the people we currently call criminals are just people. Every one of them we prosecute is someone's mother and father, son or daughter. And we need to focus on building a criminal justice system that gives them an opportunity for a hand up toward productivity and sobriety. And that has to include us all. And I'll work to find solutions for those whom we have to put in jail. Because there are a lot of people, there are some people, that are just dangerous people, that have to remain in jail so that they don't hurt us. But 97% of those people, at some point or another, will come back and live among us. And we have to do everything we can to make sure that when they come back, they can come back and productively return to society, rather than come back worse than when they went in. Last night, I saw, we heard the tragic story from Bernie Kerik, the New York Police Commissioner, who told the story of a Marine that was convicted on a very minor charge. But because it was a federal crime of mandatory sentencing, he was put in jail for 18, imprisoned for 18 months. Commissioner Kerik said, "I watched that man, that young man come into the prison, and you could tell he was a Marine. His clothes were starched, his boots were shiny like glass. He said, 'Yes, sir,' 'No, sir,' 'Yes, ma'am,' 'No, ma'am,'" to everyone around him. And it was obvious that he'd been trained to be a Marine. When he left the camp 14 months later, he said he left as a thug, his pants down around halfway down his bottom, his prison tattoos all over his body, and, you know, wearing flip-flops. And, you know, that's what, that's what we have to guard against, is sending people to prison and turning them into worse criminals than they were to begin with. We also need to recognize the humanity and the hurt in every victim of crime. We have to realize that crime has real victims with real consequences. And we need to do a better job building a system that will help victims heal. That's what we're trying to do in Utah County. And if I'm the Attorney General, that's what we'll try to do as, for the entire state. But it takes us all, frankly. Together, we can do it. Together, we can redeem our criminal justice system. And I can lead the effort. But I can't do it without your vote. And so, I am, you know, crisscrossing this state, virtually speaking, trying to talk to as many people as I possibly can about the absolute need that we have to return to reform our criminal justice system. I'm so grateful for your participation, not only as a state delegate, but for your participation today. And I'd like to take your questions, if you have any, and really try to dig down and help you decide for whom you'll cast your, for whom you'll cast your vote for Attorney General. And so, if your microphone works, please unmute it and speak up. If your microphone doesn't work, or if you'd rather type the question, type the question. But let's discuss some of these issues that you have, and see if I can give you a satisfactory answer. And if no one has a question, then I've got more I'll say. But I'd like to, I'd like to give you folks the opportunity to speak, frankly.
So I have a question for you. This is Gary Watts. I am in Orem. I greatly appreciate what you've done for our county attorney's office. My biggest concern is actually you leaving prematurely from the county attorney's office. And there's no question that there needs to be a change in the AG's office, the corruption, that, I mean, I saw it six years ago, with the, you know, the smearing of John Swallow. And so, wanting to have a change there. But just wondering your opinion on, if you leave the Utah County Attorney's Office, what is to prohibit it just sliding back into, you know, the old habits that were happening previously?
That's a, that's a great question. Quite frankly, that's a question that I have worried about. Because I ran for the Utah County Attorney's position, because I wanted to reform the Office of the County Attorney, which we are doing. It takes time, as you know, because what, when I talk about reforming an office, it's a, it's a much more difficult thing than you'd imagine, because it's not the question of setting policies. It's a question of taking the time with all of your prosecutors and helping to change their hearts, and helping to open their hearts. Because, you know, we don't need more money in our criminal justice system. We need, we need more heart in our criminal justice system. And, and so, if I'm elected Utah Attorney General, and I will be completely frank with you and say, I have no idea what those prospects look like. You know, we've done no polling. We're a very, we're a very lean operation, trying to do our best, quite frankly, just to give a message. But if I were elected Utah Attorney General, I would work with the Utah County Republican Party to ensure, I would campaign my head off for three candidates for Utah County Attorney, all of whom had the same perspective and the same vision that I have. And there are now plenty of those people in that office, as I have, as some have left, and I've recruited others and had additional funding for more. And it would be my number one task to make sure that, that the Republican Party, who would send three to the county commission, and then, you know, my relationships with the county commissioner such that I believe that the county commission would give tremendous weight to who I, for my choice, for who had to replace me. So, while I can't handpick my successor, I have a real interest in, in seeing that it doesn't slide back. But that raises a point as to why I want to be Attorney General in the first place. And the why is this, that Utah law gives the Attorney General the statutory obligation to exercise supervisory powers over what occurs in the prosecution of crime with the other county attorneys, with all the, with all the county attorneys. Now, that's not something that you do by edict. It's something that you do by persuasion. But it's also something that has never been done by Sean Reyes, because we really essentially have 29 criminal justice systems, with some operating better than others. And while we, while we have to look for local control, and recognize local control, and recognize local uniqueness, as Attorney General, I would work to try and implement and motivate the kinds of reforms that we're doing in Utah County statewide. But, you know, thank you for your support here in Utah County. And, and I'll tell you, if after Saturday, I'm no longer a candidate for Attorney General, I'll be, I'll be just fine reforming the criminal justice system in Utah County, because I'm about reform, not about, not about seeking a particular office. Okay?
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Holly says, "What can you, what can you, what do you see you can do better than what is currently being done in the Attorney General's office?" Holly, that's a great question. And let me, let me say this, that Sean, it's all about the focus of the Attorney General. The office will go in the direction that its leaders will push it. That's the same way it is in any organization. The problem, the problem for me, and one of the big reasons that I'm running for Attorney General, is the fact that I never see Sean Reyes in any context that deals with Utah. The only time I ever see Sean Reyes is when he's doing stuff outside the state for the Underground Railroad, which is an important project. But it's really hardly, it's hardly Utah's problem. I've been the county attorney for 15 months now. And, and I'm frankly surprised that I can still say this. I've been in office for 15 months, and I've never spoken with Sean Reyes. I've tried to get meetings with him. I've sent phone calls to him. I've tried to get a phone call, a phone message, a meeting. I'm the county attorney in Utah's second-largest county, and I've never talked to the guy as county attorney. I spoke to him once, four years ago, at a public event where he spoke. And that's the only time, and he's undoubtedly a nice guy. But this isn't a high school popularity contest. This is about who's going to work for the state of Utah. And so, what I, what I will say, I would, you know, focus on, I'll build a relationship with all the county attorneys. My office will become a support to all the county attorneys. And my office will truly begin to narrow in and hone in on reforming criminal justice. And we'll start working on important civil issues like public lands, payment in lieu of taxes to try and increase those, gaining access to our public lands over county roads. Those are all things that, quite frankly, we've missed out on in the, over the last six years. And I'll work on fixing that. And so, the short answer is, well, number one, because we need to find someone who will reform the criminal justice system. And Sean Reyes has demonstrated he's not going to do that. Number two, we have to find someone who will foster relationships with county attorneys. And number, and number three, and I noted this, I made some reference to this, we've got to find someone who will settle down and be the Attorney General, and not simply campaign for office and raise money, and spend money on, you know, whining and dining the rich and famous. It shocks me, for example. You know, Law Day is an event that we have in our country. It happens on the 1st of May. That's next week, I think, or, you know, it's coming up. Sean, at the height of the Sun Ends Film Festival, spent $60,000 on a luxury hotel in Park City, and labeled it a Law Day event. I don't know what that's about. But I can guarantee you that it wasn't a Law Day event. I suspect it was some sort of swanky fundraiser that helped him, you know, perpetuate his machine. And I believe that, I believe that, you know, we need to change that. The Attorney General's office should not be about gaining, for people gaining political access. And, you know, he, he is, Sean tries to assert that county attorneys up and down this state support him. That's not true. He may have a relationship with one or two, but county attorneys up and down the state generally never see him. I can promise you, if current, if current county attorneys supported him in droves, you'd be hearing about it from Sean Reyes. It's just not, it's just not the case. Okay. Cheryl says, asks, "Why do you believe you have a better chance than John Swallow?" And what, and what would you, I'm going to insert the word "do differently," I think that's what you're trying to say. Well, let me give you a plug for tonight. That's a great opportunity to plug this. John Swallow, I felt like it was kind of a shame that we haven't had any debates with the, you know, candidates for Attorney General. And so, I, my team, we came up with this idea of having an unmoderated discussion with the candidates. We invited John Swallow to attend. He accepted. We invited Sean Reyes to attend, and he declined. And so, John Swallow and I are going to be talking tonight at 7:00 on the Zoom link that we can send to you, or I think that we probably already have sent to you. And that's going to give you a real good opportunity to see both of us, and to hear how we feel about things. I will tell you that regardless of what you think about John Swallow, and I will say, I think John Swallow's been through hell with his process. And I think that it's changed him in a way, and helped him to understand the need for reform, much like some of the people I had on the, on the program last night. But I'll tell you that reform's going to take a very close working relationship with the legislature. We're simply not going to have the reforms that we need without, without changing some of the critical legislation. And, and I think that John Swallow's going to have a very difficult time working with the legislature that investigated him seven years ago, or eight years ago. I also think that if, I also think that if John Swallow is the nominee, that you're going to hand the, you're going to hand the job to Greg Scordis, who's going to be the Democratic nominee. Because independents and Democrats who have the ability to swing this race are not, are not going to, I just don't see them giving John Swallow a second chance. Okay. Specifically, what would you, this is from Andy, "What would you do to improve access to public lands?" It's a great question, Andy, and I'm going to say this. There's a law in Congress, law in federal law called RS 2477, that's the name of the law. It says that any road that was a public road for 10 years prior to the creation of a forest or the BLM or a wilderness area, any kind of federal entity, that that road belongs to the county, and so, a county road. And, and, and that's kind of the no man's land currently in federal lands, because the federal government, they know that those, that most of those roads are county roads. But they don't want to give us control over those county roads. Well, my position has always been, it was always this way when I was in Juve County, if it's our road, we don't need permission from the federal government to give us control of our road. We go and we act like it's our road. That's, that's what owners do. And so, in Juve County, we graded our roads, we maintained our roads, we, we looked at the Forest Service and the BLM, and we simply said, "These are our roads. We don't need your permission, because in fact, they're ours. If you think they're not ours, then you come, you come prove it." And, you know, while I was there, I don't know what's going on in Juve County now. But when I was there, we maintained our roads. And I think that that's what we need to be doing statewide, because we have a very, we have a very friendly administration to these kinds of issues. And we've really lost four years of opportunity to solidify these access issues. Because quite frankly, it's less important who owns the land, to me, and more important, who has access to the land. Because once we have access to the land in Utah, no federal bureaucrat in Washington's going to know or care that we're driving down our road on public land. All right. Holly says, he's been very accessible to Twilla County. I'm glad to hear that. As well as the FOP, do you have a relationship with your local FOP? You know, Brent Jack's the president of the Utah FOP, and I have met several times. Deputy Flores, who's the local head of the Utah County Chapter of the FOP. Deputy Flores, who's the local head of the Utah County Chapter of the FOP, you know, he and I have spoken before and have a, you know, a growing relationship. I will tell you that, you know, the FOP endorsed Sean Reyes in 2016. You don't see that they're endorsing Sean Reyes now. They've held off on their endorsement. And, and that should speak volumes. If the FOP isn't willing to stick by the, i- i- if the FOP is going to still put their endorsement, quote unquote, out to bed, that should tell you something about how the FOP and, and Sean Reyes are really truly getting along. And I, I'll tell you, that relationship is not as strong as you, as it should be if you're the sitting Attorney General. Randy asks, Randy asks, much of our problems, I think, Michael, someone's unmuted. If we can find out who that is and mute them, if, we're not trying to silence you, we're just trying to silence the background noise. So if you have something, you know, we can certainly unmute you if you want to talk. Randy says, much of our problems in electing the right people to represent us in government is the lack of education on the documents of liberty. We don't teach the Constitution well enough in schools. What can the Office of the Attorney General do to help facilitate greater knowledge of the Constitution in the schools? But, you know, that's a very good question. And I will say that it's everybody's responsibility to help facilitate greater knowledge of the Constitution in schools. I, I think that as Attorney General, you start talking about it. As Attorney General, you start adhering to your constitutional duty. But, but quite frankly, the schools is where we need to be focusing our efforts because as a, you know, 50-year-old or a 60-year-old or a 70-year-old person, you know about the Constitution, but as a nine-year-old, you don't. And, and I've seen that in my, in my lifetime on religious liberties, up close and personal. I have a son who's a West Point graduate. And you go to West Point and, you know, where, where, where real power resides, not only political power, but military power. And you go to any banquet or any, or any dinner or any event, it starts with an opening prayer and it ends with a closing prayer. And everything in between is talking about God and liberty and, you know, obeying God's commandments, frankly. I mean, it, it is among the most religious places, I think, that I have ever been in the United States that wasn't a church. And, and, and it's touching to see these, you know, one and two-star generals talking to these young cadets about these things. Well, you come back to the elementary school in, you know, Saratoga Springs or in Rose Park or in Monticello. And, and we don't talk about religion. We don't talk about God. We don't talk about the fact that government isn't the supreme power, but that there's something higher than that. And I, and I can promise you that it, and I have seen this one with my work in the former Soviet Union. That's how, this is how this works. No one cares that West Point has that power because 20 years from now, West Point won't be that way because the cadets that are there won't have that, you know, the second graders in, 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 in elementary school today will be the cadets 15 years from now, and they won't have that same understanding. And so, you know, that's how we eliminate these important constitutional protections, is to stop talking about them. And I, and, and I hadn't thought frankly, Randy, about going to schools and talking about the Constitution. But in a way, that's what I'm doing in Utah County. Everywhere I go, I'm talking about the jury trial and the need to reform. And the jury trial is in fact the Sixth Amendment of the Constitution. So I, I think that, you know, we all need to take a, 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 a role in, in ensuring that our youth understand that we have a constitution, what it is. But most importantly, while they may understand their rights, they need to understand their obligations and their responsibilities to the Constitution. Because it's not our rights that keep us free. It's adherence to our obligations. Okay. Jeanette Drake, what would you do as Attorney General to protect our constitutional rights as we end the COVID-19 quarantine and restart the economy? I, I believe, and, and incidentally, I, I, I may be more susceptible than others. I'm one of the first people in the state that got COVID-19. And, and it's horrible. I was, and I came at a very bad time because it came right in this, you know, between the filing, time I filed for election and, and and the convention. But I was down for nearly two and a half weeks, flat on my back, and it's, and it's very difficult to get, to bounce back, from which to bounce back. But I'll go back to the quote from Tom, from, from Benjamin Franklin, that, you know, if you want to trade your liberty in a way in exchange for security, you're soon going to find that you don't have either. We need to balance how we do. We, we, we need to suggest people, suggest that people have social distancing. We need to suggest good practices. But it's not government's role to, 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 to rule by edict, to say, you know, you can't go here, you can't go there. I, I think that crosses the line. Now, as the Utah County Attorney, that's a very important thing for me because I ultimately am the person that has to enforce any order. And, and, and I, I, I don't work for the County Commission. I don't work for the Health Department. I don't work for the government. I work for the residents of Utah County. And, and my duty is to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the state of Utah. I can promise you that if, if someone came to me and said, you know, we, we saw that there were 25 people at a restaurant the, uh, last night, we want you to prosecute them. Uh, that's not something that I'd prosecute. So at the end of the day, enforcement goes to the county attorneys. And, 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 and when I say, you know, I'm just, it doesn't matter to me what the order is. I'm not going to enforce it if I think it violates our, our constitutional rights. And then that's just kind of the way it is. Okay. Sherry has given us a link to register for the conversation with the Attorney General's candidates. And, and Holly, who left, says thanks, gives us her thank you. And then we have Karen Spencer. It seems like oftentimes when a crime is reported to law enforcement, nothing is done, and there is no follow-up with the victim. Identity theft, property crimes, and rape kits are not processed. Those come to mind. What are your thoughts about how you can change that? I laugh. I'm not laughing at you, Karen. I'm laughing over the fact that I've spent the last 15 months trying to change the very problem that you articulated. Let me give you some statistics. If you are a woman who's been sexually assaulted and you go to law, and you go to the police station and you have a, and, and you report the crime, and then you go to the hospital and you have a forensic exam done, and then you come back to the police, police agency and say, I, I want this prosecuted. Only 23% of those cases ever make it to the prosecutor's office. 77% of them remain at the police station. Why? I'm, I'm not quite sure. We're trying to get to the bottom of that because what we're trying to do is start tracking these things as, as the rape kits are done so that we can then come back and ask about where these cases are. I, I will tell you that it is easier in Utah County to steal 10 or 15 or $20,000 in some identity theft or property crime than it is to steal Snickers bar from the local convenience store. Why? Because we're not focused on those kinds of crimes. We're focused on the low-risk crimes. And, and it's not working. We, we need, we need to be smarter on crime, which means that we need to be tougher on crime in a lot of respects. I'm going to have Michael or Sherry put up a link right now to a survey that I've been conducting amongst state delegates that, that illustrates this very point. If you've taken the survey, please don't take it again. But if you haven't taken the survey, please take a moment and take the survey. We can change, but your question is, what are your thoughts about how you can change that? You change that, I believe, by educating both the public on the one hand and law enforcement on the other. It's difficult, if you're inside the system, to acknowledge that the way we've been prosecuting and, and enforcing the laws over the last several years hasn't been working. But, but once you, but, but the people know that. And so once you, once you convince the people, and the people start to convince the law enforcement, you know, the people have the capacity to bring law enforcement along. And, and I, 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 I tell people, particularly law enforcement people everywhere I go, listen, I, I am trying to bring prosecutors and law enforcement people toward the people. Never in American history has, have the police and the prosecution have suffered from a worse public perception problem. And it's because we're not handling the wrong things, because there's a lack of follow-up, because we're not prosecuting the right crimes, and sometimes because we're prosecuting the wrong crimes and the wrong people. Not that they didn't commit the crime, but that we're not prosecuting the crimes that truly will, will protect society. And so it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of, a lot of work in conversation and education. I think that's really the main thing. That's what I've been trying to do in Utah County. Carolyn asks, in response to the question on the Constitution in schools, I'm 24, and I'm happy to report that at least where I went to school, five years ago in Utah, we were taught extensively about the Constitution. Carolyn, I'm, I'm happy to hear that that is the case. Could you maybe tell us on the text line where you went to school? Because I think that that's important. That's, that's important information to have. Okay, Rayetta has raised her hand. Can we unmute Rayetta's microphone? And then maybe Rayetta, you can first tell me if I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
Yeah, that's right. Can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Oh, okay. So I love what you're saying, and I love that you're using this time to educate the delegates. My question is, on substance, is there a big, a big difference between you and John Swallow, would you say? I know you talked about you, you feel like you have a better chance of winning.
Right. I, I think that John Swallow and I, substantively speaking, would agree on our reform ideas. I think that, I think that implementing those ideas, that's what I've, that's what I've been doing in Utah County. And so I kind of see where the traps are to that, and it's, it's a problem that I've been working on quite a bit. John and I are going to have a different perspective. John came to understand these things as a defendant. Right? And, and so he has felt the full force of government bear down on him. I, I have learned these things as a criminal defense attorney. And then as an elected prosecutor, both in Juve County and here, where, where you understand this incredible power of government. And, 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 and so maybe it doesn't matter how you learn the lesson. Maybe it only matters that you learned the lesson. But as far as, as far as the need to diminish prosecutorial power, you know, I think John and I line up quite similarly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Carolyn went to Orem High School in Utah County. Hooray for Orem High School. I think that's fantastic. You know, I, I'm proud to live in Orem and, and, and I'm grateful that that was your experience. Brett asks, I had my card number stolen and the criminal went from ATM to ATM, taking small amounts at a time. The bank said the charges were suspect because they were within 10 miles of my home. They said they were investigating, but it would go faster if I filed the police report. The one I filed, when I filed the police report, the bank immediately returned my money. I have not heard if anything came from the police report. Or they typically, typically ignored once the bank returns the money. My identity was stolen, and now I'm wondering if I need to worry about my credit report. Well, first off, Brett, you raise a lot, several different issues there. And, and, and the first one is this. You do, do need to worry about your credit report. You, you do need to look out after your own situation. You do need to try to protect yourself because at the end of the day, as well-intentioned as government is, government ultimately is not going to do it for you. I, I will say that when it comes to white collar crime, there is less urgency on the part of many law enforcement agencies. It depends on the law enforcement agency in which you deal. Some of them will deal with it quite swiftly and right, you know, it, it's all individual, right? I mean, it just depends on whether if you go into the grocery store, you're going to get a cheerful checkout clerk or a grumpy checkout clerk. Sometimes we find police officers who are enormously helpful. Sometimes we find police officers who want to be helpful but are very busy with other stuff. Every circumstance is different, and that's why I'm saying that the, that the most important thing is to, is to make sure that you do what you can in that instance to protect yourself. I would certainly change your credit cards and, and I'd start looking at your credit report. Yeah. Thank you for your question. Okay, Rayetta has another, maybe, you should have another question, Rayetta. Your hand's still raised. Maybe we just didn't unraise it.
Oh, sorry. No, I don't.
Okay. No, thank you. All right. Thank you. Are there any other, do, does any other questions that people have that, that I can address? If, if not, I'm going to kind of wind up with a, with, with, with kind of a story that, that illustrates what got me into this, if that's okay.
Can we ask something?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, now I feel bad I didn't get to watch all of your Zoom meetings. But, um, I sent you an email, and I think you were starting to respond to that, and you were going to address those in your Zoom meetings.
Oh, okay.
About.
Talk about them here briefly.
Yeah. So, um, my aunt and uncle are in a mission where they serve in the Salt Lake County Jail, and they, you know, get to know the inmates and talk to them. And they found out about some things that are negative for the inmates, like some of the programs to help them get back into society when they leave jail are very, very corrupt. And actually get them into more crime, into stealing drugs, into making them into prostitutes and things like that. What, how, how do you handle that? How would you address that?
Well, you've identified a real problem, and that is, we send people, we send nonviolent, I mean, there, there are two, there are two kinds of crimp people who they're, they're the dangerous, harmful, we hurt you sort of people. They, 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 they need to be in prison, and they need to be in jail so that we're, you know, so they're not hurting, hurting those who are outside. Then there's the other 85 or 90% of the population in jail who are not violent people. And, you know, they're people who are, who have done stupid things. They're people who are addictions, who are addicted and, and not in the right mind to begin with. And, and we have to ask ourselves the question, is our, is, is, is our purpose to, to punish these people or is our purpose to protect our society? Because we don't protect our society by putting these people in jail. We make our society less protected when we put these people in jail. When we put, when we put someone in jail and they come out worse, then our society is, is, is less safe. There's a great quote that Pat Nolan used last night on our, on our Criminal Justice Reform webinar. He said, you know, we should be putting people in jail that, that, that harm us, but, but we, we spend our time putting people in jail that we're just mad at. And, and, you know, frankly, there's no reason for us to, to do that. We spend $15 million a year in my county jailing nonviolent offenders. And so it, it's like we give them full tuition scholarship to learn how to be a bigger criminal. What, what we've got to do is, is find different solutions for those problems, programs that will help them gain sobriety. I, I will tell you that the opposite of addiction is not sobriety. The, the opposite of addiction is human connection. People become addicted because of traumatic experiences they've had with their relationships. Whether they're sexually abused, whether they were neglected, whatever the abuse is, or whatever the trauma is, that's primarily speaking what leads people to, 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 to addiction. And when we can create more human connection, we reduce addiction. And so rather than putting people away from our society in jail and making that addiction and that, and that separation worse, we need to take them out of jail and, and get them we need to take them out of jail and, and get them into the community where we can begin to build people. Because we have to recognize that there's nothing more socialistic in our society than criminal justice. We pay our taxes and we expect the government to take care of those criminals. They could, those criminals in quotes. Well, those criminals are our mothers and fathers and sons and daughters and friends and neighbors and brothers and sisters. And, and, you know, those criminals, it's the woman with four kids down the street who strung out on Valium because she's got four kids that is driving her crazy. Four kids under the age of seven and she can't deal with them. And now we're going to make her a criminal. Well, you know, we all have to recognize that we have a duty to help those among us who are struggling with these problems. And when we can do that, then we will, we'll, we'll, we'll come closer to solving our problems. You know, I, before you ask your next question, let me just tell this brief story. I mean, I was a young county attorney and I saw in Juve County, and I saw this straight on. I had an 18-year-old kid who had his life in front of him. And he, he got caught going from California to Montana. He got caught in Juve County with two pounds of marijuana. And his lawyer came to his, my office with, with this guy, asking for a plea bargain. And I said, I said, you know, what is it that you want to do with your life? And he said, well, I, I've always kind of wanted to join the, the Coast Guard. And I said, well, you know, you probably haven't thought this through, but two pounds of marijuana from California to Montana, that's not going to get you into the Coast Guard. It, it's going to put you potentially in prison, but it's not going to get you to the Coast Guard. And he said, well, yeah, I hadn't really thought of that. And I said, well, you know, do you have a family? He said, yeah, I've got a mom and a dad. And I said, I said, okay. And I asked that because quite frankly, creative solutions to the criminal justice system work far better when you have a supportive friend or neighbor or mom or dad or brother or sister or aunt and uncle, grandma, or grandpa, whatever. And I said, okay, I'm going to give you option number one, as you go back to Montana. And I'm going to make you a felon for that two pounds of marijuana. You're going to serve your time in jail and you go to Montana and you can live your life. You can do whatever you want, but your trajectory, as you know, is going to be lower. Or I said, you can call your dad and you can tell him right now that, hey dad, there's this place called Juve County in Utah. And I just got busted here with two pounds of weed. You can tell him and then you can turn back around. You can go back to California. You can enlist in the Coast Guard. And if you're, if you send your paycheck, pay stub to your dad and your dad factures your pay stub to me. And for the next 36 months, if I see a pay stub coming from you, at the end of that 36 months, I'll dismiss this case and you will not be a felon. You will not be a criminal. You will have paid your debt to society. Well, you know, he took that deal. He went back to California. And, and I started to look forward to the, to the, to the paychecks coming in every, every month. Because it was my first real experience in substantive, creative work at helping someone be better by protecting community, but, you know, to protect the community rather than just put people in jail. Well, after months, 27, he was promoted to be a sergeant in the Coast Guard. And, and, and I've often wondered, you know, what would have happened to that kid? How I just put him in jail and made him a felon? As opposed to the fact that, you know, he made something of his life. And, and it didn't cost a dollar more money. In fact, it cost less money because we didn't have to put him in jail. You know, it just, what it required is not more money. What it requires is more heart. And that's what we need to do is, is put more heart into the criminal justice system. Okay, you had other questions?
Oh, yeah. Well, basically, and I love that story, by the way, I heard that earlier. You were talking about how it would take a while to get to the point where we are doing things in a more just way in the criminal justice system. In the meantime, for situations where we have programs that are supposed to be helping the, the people that get out of jail to get back into society, but they're corrupt, like this particular place. How, what do you do to keep those programs from being corrupt like that? And, and making these people trying to enter society, making it pretty much impossible for them to enter society as good, clean victim, or not victims, as citizens instead of criminals?
What, what, well, that, that's something that you can fix immediately and needs to be fixed immediately. What you do is you, when you learn about that program, you know, you just put a big black X through that, you know, line through that program and say, we're no longer sending people to this program. And that's truly the power of the prosecutors is that when you're dealing with plea bargains, you know, you, you hold every card. And it shouldn't be that way, but, but if you have that power, you need, you have an obligation to exercise it with the kind of wisdom and judgment that that would, that that would require. And that's, that you just stop sending people to that program. And, and, and if there's evidence that they're breaking the law themselves, then you go after that. Because, you know, this is, and I'll tell you, part of the, part of the, part of the problems, part of the problem, part of the challenge in reforming the criminal justice system is the fact that whole industries has grown, whole industries have grown up around the criminal justice system. And, 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 you know, it's a little like simplifying the tax code. I mean, see who comes out of the woodwork when you try to simplify the tax code? Who's it going to be? It's going to be the CPAs, the accountants and all the tax lawyers. Because, you know, you're affecting, you're, you're affecting their lifestyle. And, and that's, that's what you need to, to recognize that, that you have to have, if you're going to reform anything, you, you have to have the courage to do it. And, and, you know, I learned that, I learned that years ago as a, as a very small town, a rural county attorney, when I, when I had to investigate and ultimately I chose to prosecute Utah's first polygamy case in 50 years. I, I, I knew that, you know, I was placed in a situation, it's a very interesting story that I won't tell you now. But I, I knew that if I chose to prosecute the, this man, Tom Green, that I, that, that it would cost me my political career. I knew that if I chose not to prosecute this man, that it would hurt me politically. And at the end, you know, I was 31, 32 years old. And, 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 and that was a moment for me where I realized that there's tremendous freedom in understanding that you're going to get beaten up on both sides, regardless of what you choose. Because it gives you the freedom to just do what's right. And, and, and that's why I ran for county attorney. I don't, I don't have a dog in some political fight. I, I, I'm just fine losing an election. I'm just fine winning an election. Obviously you'd rather win than lose. Nevertheless, you have to understand that when, when political power and prosecution authority or political desire and you, you merge political ambition and prosecutorial authority, that becomes a very dangerous tool. Because you have the power to destroy people's lives. And, and if you give plea bargains with one ounce of thought for how it'll affect you, then, then you are building your own career on the back of some person who's in a very unfortunate circumstance. And, and, and that's another reason to reduce plea bargains because it's difficult to remove all of that out of human nature. But we have a real problem in the Attorney General's office because we don't have, we don't have courage there. Courage builds political will. Courage brings people along. And, and, and that's the only way you change the system. And, you know, I get, I get criticized all the time because of my efforts to, to change our criminal system. But, but, but I am resolute and steadfast because I know what I know and I've seen what I've seen. And, and I don't have all the answers, but I can certainly see the problems. And I know that we have collectively the wisdom and the judgment to find answers to our problem. Other questions?
Do you mind if I ask one more teeny one or have I used up too much time?
No, go ahead.
Okay. And, um, when you were first put in as Utah County attorney, you had some meetings, which I feel bad I didn't go to, to ask for volunteers to help people who are in the situation that I was just talking to you about.
Right.
What were your ideas on that? And how would we?
Well, we, that's, that's something that I absolutely intend to implement at, at some point along the way. It, it, and that is, we, we need to connect hardworking, non-addicted, non-criminal people with people who have addictions and who are struggling in society. That's the connections we need to create. Because that's how we're going, that, that's how we're going to build society on both sides of society. I, I, I will tell you that I have a guy named Dale, who's, who I prosecuted back in the year 1998 or nine in Juve County. He's been on probation and parole. He was on probation and parole for, for over 20 years. And just before I became the county attorney in Utah County, I ran into him again. And he was, had been in prison for a nonviolent offense. He, he wouldn't hurt a fly. He's just, he's kind of like Otis on Andy Griffith. If you remember Andy Griffith. I mean, he's, he, he's always going to disobey you and you, and then and until he, until something changes his heart to say, you know, I'm going to do better. Well, I, I, I looked at him and I could say, you know, Dale, you're, you know, you've been on probation and parole now for 20 some odd years. You need some help here. And you need a job. You need some training. And I said, you, you show up at my house tomorrow at 8:00 AM and you now work for me. And, and, you know, it, I had some things for him to do. To be honest with you, some days Dale drives me crazy. Because he says he'll show up at nine o'clock in the morning and it might be two in the afternoon before he gets here. Sometimes I have to call him up on the phone and have his mother wake him up at 10:00 in the morning. But, but when he gets here, the guy's brilliant. And, 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 and he shows me how to build things and he fixes stuff around my house that, that, you know, I couldn't ever fix in a million years. And, and he has this mechanical head about himself that, that truly benefits me. And we have these conversations. You know, I helped him get a debit, a bank account and a debit card. I talked to him about saving. I talked to him about, you know, all these different things in life. And, and Dale looked at me after five or six months. I mean, this is, this is going on two years now. And, you know, Dale still drives me crazy. Dale also benefits me. But, but, but do you know what? Dale came to me after about six months of him coming to my house to work. And he had this, he had this little, you know, card stock certificate in his hands. And the certificate was his successful completion of parole, given to him by this, you know, the Utah State Board of Pardon and Parole. And, 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 and he said, David, I'm going to frame this and put this on my wall. It's the first time in over 20 years that I've been completely free from probation or parole. And, and, and I looked at that and I thought, you know, I thought of William Shakespeare. You know, the quality of mercy is twice blessed. It blesses those who give and those who receive. You know, Dale, Dale has, has enriched my life in a major way, despite driving me nuts along the way. But I've really helped him. It didn't cost a dollar. It didn't require more money. It just required more heart. And so when we talk about volunteers, that's the sort of program that I want to create all around Utah County. Because out of a county of 675,000 people, I'm confident that I could find two or 3,000 people who will take on someone and, and, and be their mentor. That's how we solve our criminal justice problems is connecting people with people, not separating people and just putting them in jail. I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah. Thanks a bunch.
No, tha- tha- thank you. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end with one very quick story. And, you know, I'm, I'm over time. I apologize. I, I appreciate you sticking with me. You know, I, I was once a very jaded and very closed and very cynical criminal justice lawyer. I've been a criminal defense attorney. I've been a prosecutor. I've seen it all. I knew it all. People don't change. I mean, I, you know, I mean, I, 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 um, you know, I was, I was one of those guys that, that had just burned out. And I knew that I had to go do something else. Because as a criminal defense attorney, I had all the skills in the world, but I didn't have the heart to do it. Because I was so burned out and I knew it hurt people. And I, my wife and I volunteered with the American Bar Association to go to Ukraine. And we volunteered to help the, re- re- reform the Ukrainian criminal justice system. We, we were going to spend there a year. I wound up spending 14 years there because it changed my life so tremendously. But, I mean, I didn't spend all those years in Ukraine. I've commuted from the United States to Ukraine. I, I've been in, I've been in and out of the nation of Ukraine over 150 times in the last 15 years. And I'll tell you, that's a lot of sky miles. But the, we got to Kiev. And, and when we got to Kiev, we, we found a system, we found a nation that was really you know, on the verge of an election. And, and the, the government was, they had its candidate. And, and, and everywhere you went, you saw billboards for the government candidate. You never saw anything for the opposition candidate. And, and except everywhere you went, you saw little vestiges of orange. You'd see people that have an orange ribbon on their lapel or a piece of orange construction paper in their window or, you know, some, some, something that designated orange. And I asked someone, I said, a colleague with whom I worked, I said, what is this orange? And then he said, well, it's the color of our revolution. It's the color of our oppositions, what he said. I said, what do you mean your opposition? He said, well, it's the opposition candidate. I said, well, tell me, tell me about this opposition candidate. And he said, he said, well, it's, it's a guy named, it's a guy named Viktor Yushenko. And, and Viktor Yushenko had been the head of the central bank. And, and he had been the prime minister, but he recognized the problems in the communist government. And, and so they parted ways and he became the opposition candidate for president. And you can see right here over, you know, where I'm pointing, this is what he looked like when he started running for president. But the Ukrainians and the Russians got together and they poisoned him to try to kill him because he was gaining too much power. And rather than look like that, this is what he turned into. And, 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 and he was nearly dead. He probably should have died, but he was miraculously preserved. The, the election came and my colleague had told me earlier, I said, I, I said, where's your orange? He said, I don't have any orange because I know that the government's going to win the election. And I don't want, I don't want the government to know that I'm going to vote for him. At a protest. Well, the, the election came and went and the people and the government said, you know, this has been the fairest election in all of Ukrainian history. Freedom and democracy and, and choice are the real winners here. But the, the government has eked out a very narrow victory, so everyone go back to work. Well, this man in this state went to the center square in Kiev. And he said, listen, we, we've had our independence from the Soviet Union for 13 years, but we've never been free. And I will not leave my spot, this spot, unless I'm taken out in a box. I will not leave this spot until my country has its freedom. And he called on everybody in the country to come and, and join him in, in that quest. Well, you know, something really amazing happened. And that is within two or three days, there were 10 or 20,000 people. But within a week, there were like half a million people. And, you know, the crowd looks something like, something like this. You can see over my shoulder, a, a much younger version of me as I, as, as I was there. My office was just a little bit over this way. And, and the, the government freaked out and they, they put together an effort to, to squelch it. They cut off the bus traffic, the rail traffic, the plane traffic, everything. They put up fake newscasts. And, and there was a protester in this crowd somewhere named Natalia Demetrick. And her, she was a sign language translator on the, on the local evening news. She'd protest by day here and she'd do, do these fabricated newscasts by night. When the government was saying, listen, there were some protests, but they're all over, go to work, go back to work. Well, after several days of this, she woke up and she said, I just felt dirty. And I- and I just can't do this anymore, this corruption is killing me. And this dishonesty in which I'm dealing with is killing me. And, and, and so she went into the, into the news station, she had an orange ribbon around her wrist. And once she started to translate, that orange ribbon fell, fell so that it was hanging, dangling from her wrist. And she said, you know, I'm speaking to the deaf of Ukraine. I'm sorry to say that I've been interpreting lies, our country is in revolution. Viktor Yushenko is our president. I need you to spread the word to every non-deaf person in Ukraine that you can find to tell them to get to the capital because we need you here. Well, that blew the doors off of that revolution. Within two, within ten days or two weeks, there were nearly two million people in that square. My wife and six children among them. And it, and it changed our lives, but it, it helped me to see so many lessons. One of which is that, that extraordinary things happen from everyday people. That extraordinary change happens with everyday people just doing what they can do. And I tell this story here because I, I, I say very seriously, our liberties are in peril. We must change our system. And I will say quite frankly, that the last couple of days, as I've seen what Sean Reyes is spending, is how he's spending his money and how he's, how he's getting his money, we have a real problem with an Attorney General's office that's for sale. And, 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 you know, the only way that's gonna stop is if people like you put a stop to it. I don't have power to do that, I'm not even a delegate. You have power to do that. You, you know that the Attorney General's office should not be for sale. I think everyone knows that our criminal justice system needs reform. We need, we need to band together so that we can change our system and, and begin to improve it for ourselves, but more importantly, so that we save it for our children and our grandchildren. And so, you know, voting starts now in almost, you know, sixteen hours from now. I, I, I ask you sincerely to do everything in your power to spread the word to all the deaf in Ukraine, so to speak. To all the state delegates that you know, by whatever means that you can. That, that we have a need to reform our criminal justice system, that we have the means to do it, but that we must work together to do it. I ask for your vote, I ask for your support. I ask that you continue to look at our emails and our texts as we update things and go clear through the, try to sprint through the tape on Saturday evening. But, you know, please, 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 we need your vote. We need your vote. And if you can't give us your first place vote, we ask that you give us your second place vote because both of them are very relevant. Now, tonight, John Swallow and I will be together on a Zoom call much like this. Tomorrow, Friday and Saturday, I'm going to hold a different kind of town hall. I'm gonna be, like I'm sitting in a conference room by myself and I'll just have the Zoom meeting open with an open link and anybody can come, ask their questions and leave for a few minutes. It's kind of like parent-teacher conference day, I guess, when you just come talk to the teacher and, you know, you just come, you just come and have your conversation and leave. So if you have, if, if you know of delegates who have questions, if you have questions in the coming days, please don't hesitate just to come in and hang out and, and talk with me. And so I thank you, I, I thank you for your participation in representative government. I, I will leave you with John Adams' quote about representative government and its twin, the jury trial, because that's what this is all about. You know, John Adams, who said that representative government and the trial by jury are the heart and lungs of liberty. "Without them, we have no other fortification against being ridden like horses, worked like cattle and fed and clothed like swine and hounds." As, as the Utah County Attorney who has the power right now that needs to be dispersed to the people, I ask you to help me to disperse that power to people by giving us your help. Thank you so much and I hope that we get a chance to visit again.